...and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members, the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/IST535. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Adamson here. Thank you. Director Barlow.
Director.
Director Garcia here. Thank you. Director McLaughlin. Director McLaughlin.
She won't be here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Also here.
Thank you. Treasurer Working.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. On favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. And this evening at our study session, there are three items on the agenda. The first one, 6.01, input on development of the RPS Strategic Action Plan. Dr. Pecel will facilitate this discussion. Dr. Pecel.
Thank you. I just figured, since I'm using a mask, I'll grab this for a few moments, but you're all going to get up and be moving around. So thank you in advance for indulging what I hope will be an engaging and enjoyable experience, with the possible exception of Jackie, who is a little less mobile but is still going to be good all the way around here. As board members are aware, you have approved the design of a new strategic action plan, and that's the term I'm using to differentiate it from the strategic plan that we have already in place. And we've said that we will be developing that plan through an interactive process between now and the end of the spring, through five working groups that will be asking questions about the current state of our district, best practices beyond our district, and identifying the strategies that would guide our work in Rochester for the following three school years. In any really serious, good, long-range planning effort, it's important first to get the questions right. And so tonight is going to focus on the questions that you, as board members and cabinet members, really want to see our process and our working groups dig into. Almost certainly, you're going to come up with more questions than we can actually meaningfully ask and answer in a year. And so at the end of this exercise tonight, you are going to use those dots that Michelle just mentioned to do an initial prioritization exercise. I tried to put, and I am going to jump up on the wall here, a quick overview of what our process is, and so if at any point, once we get up and move around the room, you need to remind yourself of the process. You can walk over here and glance at this, but it's pretty simple, just in case you need it. So we're going to number off into five, and we are going to spend the next 50 minutes, 5:00, rotating through the five stations that are the components of the plan. You'll be randomly assigned because we're going to be numbering off. And the process will go like this. When you first get to your station, the first, and this is a requirement, you can't deviate, the first task is to simply have everyone who's in your group, and you'll be traveling with the same group all night, first say the first thing that comes to your mind when you get to that station. It can be serious, it can be funny, it can be perceptive, it can be something you disagree with three seconds later. But the goal is to just have a quick popcorn. When you see outcomes and measures, what's the first thing that comes to your mind? Everybody's voice is just in the discussion. That should take you very little time, unless somebody says something super interesting and you really want to talk about it. The goal of that little piece of the process is to do a reset every time you switch subjects here, and just sort of get on the table, what comes to your mind when you get to the new subject. So that takes just a couple of minutes. Then, one of your group members articulates a question that this subject brings to mind. You, as a group, have some time to discuss, potentially help refine that question, and then you can write it down on the poster paper. Michelle and I will bring more poster paper if three sheets is not enough for any of these groups. And then we will have a chance to go on to another member of your group to put another question up. In the likely event, with 10 minutes, that you don't get time to talk about all the questions, the last step will be, anybody can just write any question down that you want to write down on the paper. Very importantly, after this meeting, you will still have a chance to further identify questions that may come to mind as you're driving home, or that you don't get a chance to put down on the poster paper, as Michelle will send you a follow-up email. What are all these questions going to be used for? Every one of these groups, which we're just now beginning to work on structuring and convening, and we're talking to an organization based in St. Paul about actually facilitating these groups for us, they did the Rochester Public Libraries process, and we heard very good things about it. They're called Wilder Research, and we're in discussion with them right now. Every one of these working groups will have a clear charge, and the charge will say, here's your goal, here's the issues you need to look at, here's the supports we're going to give you. Your questions tonight are going to help to find the charge to each group. What are the things we want to do it? And the reason you start with the questions is we don't want to go too quickly to solutions. We want to actually stay at the point where we're trying to say, what are we trying to achieve in the biggest sense? By May, you all need solutions to vote for in a really high-quality plan, but tonight we're just trying to stay at the questions. So there's your process. After tonight, Michelle will do two things. One, as I mentioned, she will send you an opportunity to say, did any other questions come to mind that you didn't have time to talk about tonight, or that actually just came up to you afterward? And two, she'll be asking board members to identify the top three groups that you would like to participate on, and then we will, if you want to, I suppose a board member could choose not to participate in one, I guess that's an option. But we will then be hopefully able to collaboratively working together identify, hi, collaboratively working together identify who is going to go into what group, and we'll work that out. Important point, tonight, there is a sixth, there's a sixth group that is not on the wall, and that's what we're calling the Coherence Committee. That group will not have a task to look at in terms of content, their job will be connecting the dots across all of the groups, so that actually the whole plan is connected and coherent, and so that you have something to vote for in presumably May that is more than the sum of its parts. So we'll put all of this in a follow-up email to you, but those are the two things after tonight. Additional questions? Which of the groups do you personally want to serve on? So, let me just give you a few examples, and I was a little bit hesitant about doing this, but I wanted to just give you some examples, but you should not feel even remotely wedded to this, because you can define anything that is in your mind as a question you think we should be asking through this process, but I thought I would just give you a few examples in case this is a little bit vague. So here's some that came to my mind, and these could apply to any one of these stations. What's the history? What's the current state? How do they do it somewhere else? What is a high level of performance? What is a low level of performance? Why isn't it working well? What should we start or stop doing? What if we did X? What do they think, whoever they might be or want? What does the research suggest? Those are just sort of some general kinds of questions, and you'd be thinking about that as you go through these five stations. Just to give you a couple of examples that were prompted in my mind as I was thinking about tonight, again, do not feel any requirement to use these as your model. For Group 1, Outcomes and Measures, one question that came to my mind was, how can you measure the Rochester Public Schools graduate profile? That was one question that came to my mind. For Group 2, Improvement Systems, another question that came to my mind was, what do our instructional coaches do, and how does it affect student learning? For Number 3, Economic Engine, a question that came to my mind was, why do some families choose schools outside Rochester Public Schools? For Group 4, Organizational Culture, a question that came to my mind was, how can we create schools where everyone feels like they belong? And for Group 5, Family and Community Engagement, I thought, how can we understand what parents want from our schools? Those are just some examples. To super briefly review the five groups, and then I'll stop and see if we have any questions or points of order before we number off. Outcomes and Measures is what we're trying to achieve and how we measure our progress toward it. Improvement Systems, which I know is a really vague one, it's intentionally vague, how we make progress toward our goals, the things we do. The term "systems" can sound very, very formal, but it also could just be practices, the kinds of things. So if you have to think of it, this is the what, this is one of the hows. The third, Economic Engine, and in my experience, this is the one that many strategic planning processes leave out, to their detriment. How do we fund the work? How do we get the resources to make this work happen? The fourth is Organizational Culture. How do we bring to life, for instance, the district's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion? How do we make sure that everybody can be their full self? How do we have a positive culture as opposed to a toxic or a neutral one? And then the fifth is Family and Community Engagement. How do we align what happens within the district with what happens beyond the district in homes and organizations? Those five buckets overlap, and if you put a question up in family and community that really is about outcomes and measures in some ways, don't worry about it, because what we'll be doing after tonight is taking all of the questions and things that you come up with, and we'll be synthesizing them and boiling them into the charges that we'll give to each of our working groups. Questions, observations, before we jump in. Hearing none? I will just tell you, I was out to welcome staff at Mayo High School in the huge auditorium, and Troy, the effort to number off with teachers in auditorium rows, it became comedic, but it was actually not particularly effective, because nobody could tell who was supposed to go next, and so he was standing on the stage saying, no, no, you, no, you, so this is going to go much more smoothly, I'm sure. Pick on Jackie. So Jackie, if you can start out, and you're going to just remember, your number is going to be the group where you're going to start, and then at 10 minutes, I will call time, and you'll go on. If 10 minutes is way too short, you can let me know, but as Jean and I were just talking, if we do more than 10, this whole process will really take an awful lot of our meeting time tonight, and you also have an opportunity to keep ideating these ideas after tonight's meeting. So that's the logic of 10 minutes. So, Jackie.
[inaudible]
Awesome. And I'm going to be calling time, so I won't be going to a group, so one may be a little bit smaller. So let's head to your group. Now, remember, your first task is briefly, everyone says the first thing that comes to mind, and then jump in with ideating questions, and you can go as quickly or as slowly as you want as you're moving around. I will tell you when it's time to switch in 10 minutes.
[inaudible]
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers. Shut it.
[inaudible]
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers. Shut it.
[inaudible]
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Where's my dot?
Are we wearing the, where's the markers? Or over there? I didn't get it.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Don't overthink what you begin to write down on the papers.
Thank you, Denise.
That was long.
I don't know what we're doing.
Everybody else?
I got our timer on.
You guys actually don't write down your first thoughts, you're just saying?
Oh, just saying.
Yeah. You just say.
You can make questions out, yeah.
You guys actually don't have to write down your first thoughts, you're just to say.
Oh, just say.
Yeah. What are you saying? You can make a question up, yeah.
Oh, I did have some, yeah.
I might put these ones, uh, yeah, I should play them all.
And a replacement chapter made.
So, we see how, then we decide.
I think you know what you were getting at, right?
So I let this group run a little bit long because you were just getting started. And I'm also gonna tell you, this is gonna get easier after the first time you do this. So I give you two more minutes at this station, and then you're gonna rotate to the next one. So to try and, if there's something burning in your head and you haven't had a chance to talk about it, just grab a marker and write it down. Okay, it is now time to rotate to the next station. So if you're at one, go to two, two, go to three. When you get there, read the comments of the group before you, but do not feel you have to continue their line of thinking. You can depart in whatever way you choose. So as soon as you're, it's like on the golf course, like as soon as the people at the hole ahead of you finish, you can move on. And then put down your question, read what they did. And then remember, start with your very brief first thoughts, first thing that comes to mind. You don't have to write the first thing that comes to mind down, though, that's just to get your thinking.
Make sure you go through that. When you tweet during board meetings, you have like a back buzzer.
I wish I could. I haven't figured out how to do this. No way, I'd love to do it. But no, if you ever notice a slight delay between what the event was and...
Everyone?
Three, three more minutes, three more minutes with this group.
Me group.
How do we understand? No, I don't know. Did I say that? But we have the...
I've just been hired here, so I didn't really get hold into that yet. That was something about... Though this group is often a high priority, I don't know the decision that was made, but still person ability of us. You know what I mean? We don't always see ourselves ashamed. That we're all together, yeah.
That's where I would ask, like, as soon as they go, they're asleep.
And it is, it is time to move to your next group. Thank you for playing along here.
My skill level is not bad.
Well, you can jerk it down.
Yes. I'm a product of the digital age.
Well, it should be. Yeah, it should be, right?
Three minutes left for this group, three minutes.
I tried to check.
It's like art. It's sort of healthy.
I was facilitating, I was facilitating this very funky hotel downtown Minneapolis, and they had a huge magnetic wave, and there was nothing that told you where the micro-stomach all began.
Oh, no.
It went all over the world. That's terrible. I'm like, we'll need to do workshops and write on the wall. There's like statistics and stuff like that.
I'm not welcome at the Hotel Red.
No, no, no. Out of our consciousness, advantage extroverts.
Okay, please rotate to your fourth group, your next group.
You can spread it also off.
Maybe some.
Oh, no, I don't think that'd be, I don't think that'd be. By the way, Jack, I'm on the screen. Very nice.
I have the intro that I was saying, I have the intro that I started writing. Okay, I haven't finished this one. What are our words? Colored or trying? We need something that's tied to a movement or something. I thought I had a couple words. I think something about competition. I guess. Building on that. So, we need to give one credit. Well, sorry, um, let's think about what we need to do. Co-current, I should kind of try to go with us. So, we have an option called the GMS. Since that's clear, there are many reasons. Eagle holidays.
Awesome. Yours are great.
I love everything you said.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I couldn't help myself.
Three minutes.
So, do you want to do some, um, reference?
It was just blow it. It was just blow it.
I don't think that's being, I mean, we've really got, because it would be so much.
And please move to your last group. Thank you, everybody.
I'll see if you can call the gap here.
Um. Yeah.
In the power capture, I mean, and to, please, for, in, as, as. Which I don't, which I don't.
I don't care. Anybody in this room is kind of, I just, I said, that I can say. I think I get points for trying, even if it's not fair. It's like a case to try.
My kids are go first. They're all the way around.
I had another idea, but it was a little too much. West, west. I know I should.
Yeah.
Use it. I don't want to encourage.
Yeah. I think is PDI, that's a good question. To. I wonder. So, what's PDI, I think.
Oh, yeah, I suppose you do things like that.
Keep talking. Okay, um, we see twelve people working. Yeah. You made a couple. This all school and working unit, and all school members, totally not the way it should be done. So, if, if there's a model, is it sometimes.
Three minutes on your last station. Three minutes.
Can I say what part of the PDI is. Yeah. I thought the.
Well, if I did, it was just for me.
It'll be kind of dry tonight.
Oh, that's all right. Helps counteract the really exciting.
You got to use your imagination, kind of feel amazing.
Right now. It's gonna take a little Australian round.
Sure.
So if there is, we're now at time. If there's any station that you have a burning question in your mind that you want to go to and add now. You can visit any station and add it or go back to your place and get your dots and wait for instructions on the next step. You are done with the markers unless you want to go write another question down.
Really good. Really good.
Well, we'll see how this next part goes.
Yeah, this is going to be harder.
Yeah.
This was awesome.
I mean, it's good entertainment.
So I will give, I was giving Don a moment. He went to grab some water, but I will give him the info unless he walks right in here in a second. First of all, thank you for jumping in. It's harder than at least I usually think it's going to be. Generating good questions is tough. Here's the task. And before I explain the task, I want to emphasize none of these questions is going to fall off. None of them is going to be voted off the island or eliminated now. But we do want to end with some initial sense of prioritization. So as the conclusion to this part of our study session, everybody should have fifteen dots. Board members should have green and cabinet should have orange, though I don't know exactly why I decided to have two different colors, except insofar as it might be interesting if there are differences in board member and cabinet member priorities. You can put up to three dots on each of the five stations. At the station, you can put three dots on one question, or you can put one dot on three questions.
Oh, man.
But you cannot put five dots on one. You can do three, 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 three.
Getting complicated.
Put the dot as close to the question as you can make it fairly obvious. And so what are you putting the dot around? You're saying this question is really important to me. This is an indication of its personal importance to you. Now, you can define what's important to you. It's important to you because it's a personal passion, or it's important to you because you think it's really critical for the system. But it's a personal preference indicator. You may talk to each other while you do this, and you do not have to go in linear fashion, and you don't have to go with your, the rest of your group. The real purpose of this is to take some time to read the ideas that you all have generated. Then when you feel in your gut or your brain or both, that one of the questions really resonates, you put the dot there. And then when you have put up all of your dots, you can obviously kind of take a bit of a break or come back, but just let me know so we can actually start to wind this down. And what we'll do is before we conclude this part, we'll step back and look at the questions that seem to have generated the most interest among us tonight. Any questions about this last step? All right, have fun expending your dots up to three. If you don't want to put three on one station, you can just save some dots. But you can't add them to another station.
If we save them, can we take them home?
You can take them home. Cher wants to know if she can take her dots home, and yes, you can.
Three per station.
I just lost a dot.
What?
I thought I lost.
Oh, please don't lose a dot. I'll give you a little working music.
Just like we talked about today. Right thing to say, I didn't know they were restraining us. It's like, like a super obstacle art answer today.
Michelle, this is. I'm not even in this cluster, so I'm going to move out. I'm going to refill my water. Covid cluster.
Please let me know if you see a dot fall off. There, buddy.
Don has let me know he's done, so if anybody else is done, just let me know.
I'm done.
Your dress is done. Good, okay. The dots are falling off.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Michelle has little dots we can put on with them.
Yeah. Let's do that picture. I'm on it.
Yeah. You're a perfect Viana.
Oh, you got a sticker up there. Of course, you take that picture.
Does anybody still got it? All right. Well, thank you.
See, hasn't been a lot of the dots fell off. Yeah. Sure. Organization.
Not sure anyone will remember what it was, but. That's all right. It's not easy to find music this mindless. You know, you have to, can't have lyrics or anything, because then people think, people think about the music. So I was like, this is like my workshop music. Enya is very good, but it has a positive reaction to some people and very negative in others. So the weird thing is kind of generic, like. So the weird thing is kind of generic, like... So, understanding that this is very much a work in progress, let me give a quick sense, because most of you saw this or were walking around the room, but let's just get a quick sense of some of the ideas, the questions, I should say, that you collectively ideated and agreed. A really, more than one of you is very focused on this. And just to remind you, these questions, along with a bunch of other input we've gotten, will inform the charges to the working group and the work of our coherence committee going forward. So, in the outcomes and measures space, some significant interest in how do we measure outcomes that are subjective and can't be on a spreadsheet. A ton of interest in how do we authentically measure the graduate profile? Multiple people interested in, once we have the data, what do we do with it? What will it drive? And some interest, I'm not going to read in the interest of time, the ones that got one dot, but again, none of this will fall off. Should we create a data dashboard so there is transparency and availability of data with consistency? What action steps come from the way we collect data? And then a lot of interest in how do we have connection cohesion between the data we are required to collect and report and the data we identify as best measures of our outcomes? So, some really good stuff in our outcomes and measures category. In the improvement systems category, we had quite a bit of interest in should we review district-wide options programs and how well they are supporting student outcomes? Multiple people, two people interested in how do we improve outcomes for English language learners and special education students? How do adult assumptions derail students? What are we trying to improve? Multiple people. Quite a lot of interest in can we identify the impact of after-school programming? People wondering, English language learner, GATE, SEL, math and reading supports. How do we create interventions that are effective? A couple people there. Are we doing things now that are effective interventions? Couple people there. A lot of interest in do we have a system for recruiting and retaining staff of color? Value attached to wanting to recruit, retain? Two of you interested in how do we know if our core instruction is working? A lot of interest in what is our risk tolerance for new ideas? How long do we give something to show if it works or not? So, some good stuff in our improvement system space. Over here at Economic Engine, a lot of interest in are we paying hourly employees enough? One of you was naughty and provided the answer, no. What is a district decision versus a site decision? Got a lot of interest there. Multiple people interested in how do we prioritize what's important? A lot of interest in how do we identify community budget program priorities to guide future budget reductions or referendums? Multiple of you are interested in how do we involve outside potential benefactors? Similarly, how do we fund transportation costs of moving elementary? Start/end times earlier? Two of you interested in what would our community agree to fund beyond what they do today? Four of you interested in why can't we ever fund our quote wishlist end quote items? Two of you interested in how do we leverage our internal intellectual property for revenue? And then a ton of interest in how much money do we spend per student? Those who attend district-wide options? Do we want to continue to do that? In the organizational culture bucket, a lot of interest in what, whose voices are we hearing? And who are we missing? Two of you interested in how do we effectively communicate new initiatives to staff, families and students? Three of you interested in who feels valued? How do we show that we value others? Three of you interested in how do we really include and empower staff and students in shared decision-making? And a lot of interest in how do we retain staff? They like working here, feel supported, et cetera. Why do staff leave? And then also a lot of interest in how do we bring our equity belief statements and equity policy to life? Two of you interested in how do we maximize flexibility for staff as retention and recruitment strategies? Three of you interested in how do our practices advantage extroverts and disadvantage introverts? And finally, in our family and community bucket, we have three of you interested in how do we build capacity to provide more translation interpretation services so all parents can participate in school events and activities? Lot of interest in how do we go where they are instead of expecting them to come to us? Three of you interested in these dual questions. What impact are community schools having? Should we be funding expanding the community schools model? Two of you interested in who stands to benefit from high-quality public schools and how do we involve them? What do they need from us? And a lot of interest in what are the barriers to engagement and how can we remove them? And how do we overcome parent-family distrust of schools? And finally, a lot of interest in should we offer parent-family workshops in partnership with community, cultural organizations to help ensure families have what they need to support their students? So, a lot of good ideas. We'll be typing all these up. We'll give you another chance to add to them should you so choose. And we will be also soliciting your involvement in the various working groups, which will be given a charge that they will then have the chance to react to and suggest refinements in. So even then, at some point, the process has to get very tight and we say, okay, this is your charge, this is your timeline, this is your support, but we're not at that point yet. We're still trying to define exactly what the focus is going to be. And the people on those groups and then the broader community will also have an opportunity to further contribute to this. But I think this gives us a significant step forward from where we were before. And I'm going to stop using the mic because I think I'm done facilitating. Madam Chair.
I'm going to learn how to take off my mask better. We are moving on to, we have two more agenda items left and about a half an hour. We're going to try to be very focused on these next two. 6.01 input on, that's the one we just did. I'll get focused. 8.01, goals for the interim superintendent, Dr. Pecow.
I guess it's okay to take it off briefly so you can hear me, but I'll put it right back on. I think the only thing I feel a real need to say is that these three goals are deeply related to the fact that I'm here on an interim basis. That were I here on a permanent basis, and of course, we all know and support why that's not the case, I might be, for instance, in fact, I'm positive, I'd be recommending goals that would have to do with student outcomes. Goals that would have to do with either achievement or the reduction of discipline disparities or other measures. Those are things obviously you cannot impact in one year. And so, to include those as my measurable goals, I think was beyond scope. And so what I tried to do is come up with three key goals that actually would move our broad strategy forward, but that would also be attainable in a year. And so you can see those goals and a very discreet sort of measure statement for each of them. Number one would be leading the completion of the process that you have contributed to tonight around the strategic action plan. Number two would be leading the implementation of the safe and open schools plan that the board reviewed at its last meeting, essentially our COVID strategy. And number three would be working in particular with Will and his team and the whole district to launch the Office of Diversity at Queen Inclusion, a really critical new part of our district that still has a lot of exciting work to be done to define the processes, the strategy. And so I would be making that a shared goal, obviously, with Will. The final point I'll say, and I want to put my mask back on, but it's nice to be able to say this a little more freely. I think over time, the superintendent's evaluation should include not only goals, but also a set of what I usually have called performance factors, or we might call them leadership competencies. The way the superintendent does their job. Are you ethical? Are you collaborative? Are you proactive in solving problems? All those kinds of things. For the cabinet, the goals that I'm working with, the cabinet to set, have got not only their goals as key leaders of the district, but also that set of performance factors that are, it's actually a framework I brought with me from my previous job. Right now, because I'm interim for a year and because the year is upon us, I'm not bringing that set of performance factors or leadership competencies that I'm recommending. I wanted to mention it though because I think after an interim year, it'd be very important for the board to have not only a set of goals, but essentially the way you do your work and a way to evaluate day in and day out, how you show up, how you do that. Because you could theoretically achieve all your goals and be like a really divisive, non-collaborative, you know, whatever, kind of a leader. Or you could not achieve any of your goals and be super likable and really effective. And so I think there's two pieces. What I'm bringing is a set of goals for the year.
So at this point, if you have questions, comments, suggestions, I'll take those notes. Dr. Pecow will revise this, you know, as we come to consensus and then come back with a new draft at our next meeting. Those of you who've been around for a while, and I guess everyone's been around for a while, you know that in the past, when the board has done collaboratively done superintendent goals, it takes a long time. So personally, I really appreciate the fact that Dr. Pecow was willing to set his own goals. You can certainly share your perspective about whether you think these are the correct ones or not, but hopefully, they will be in place at the beginning of the school year. So we will, he'll have the direction, we'll have the direction and know the kind of focus that he's going to have and set for the, for the district for this school year. So if you have questions, suggestions, comments, we'll take notes. Ms. Nathan.
When you say finalize, do you mean are we going to take a vote on them at a school board meeting? To approve the goals?
I think...
I would support that.
We can, we can decide. I think we should, yeah.
I've got a problem with the measurements of the COVID goal. And that's that, number one, I don't think that one individual can have such an impact on what's happening in our community and in the world that you can control whether or not there's an outbreak in a school. Number two, I would hate for a community member, a parent, to say that building is unsafe, but I superintendent won't close the schools because it's part of his measurement of what he's doing at job. So I would like to propose a different measurement for goal two.
So Melissa, my understanding is that you, you support the goal, but the measurement part, you think is unrealistically difficult.
Yes, and it's sort of a minefield depending on how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I saw you tell the prompts extent, but explain the rationale behind this particular measure.
I agree, it's imperfect. It was the best one I could come up with. The other ones I had were even more the problem. It was things like quarantine and outbreaks and things like that. I do think this board has made a very, very strong statement, and I share it, about wanting to keep our schools open. And so I think, I totally hear what you're saying. I'm not sure what a better one is. I'm comfortable with this insofar as if I didn't, first of all, I would not do what it's very legitimate to worry that the goal might force me to do, which is not close a school, we shouldn't close a school. The goal though incentivizes me and us to do everything we can to avoid that. And if I didn't meet this goal, I think everyone on this board would accept the explanation why if it proved unsafe to keep it open. But I'd be open to an alternative. I actually really tried to think of different options to this one. And this was the most defensible I could come up with because the others were very fine-grained about the other elements of our strategy, whereas I thought, okay, we get to June and we can say, we didn't close schools. You know, that seems to me a very positive, but also achievable goal, but I'd be open to alternatives too. And cabinet folks may also, they didn't necessarily see this before, you all are seeing it too.
Yep, Dr. Garcia.
So I had a similar reaction, but I felt like to me it was maybe the ending that could be conceptualized differently. So no school or programs are closed for in-person instruction? And then fix whatever the end is to kind of justify or respond to, like, you don't have control over the Delta variant or any other variants that may come that may in effect force us to close the school. But I do appreciate prioritizing keeping the schools open, and I think that's important for everyone here. So just some of the notes that I wrote is, you know, like to kind of fix the end of that measure is, you know, should students and staff elect to go remote on their own? And so that we don't have enough students or educators in a particular school or in a particular classroom to hold it? What is that contingency plan? And I think if you want to keep this or some version of it as your measurement, that we need to be very explicit in working with the mayor and the city council to prioritize schools. So if something happens and she starts to, you know, Mayor Norton starts to decide these types of buildings may or may not remain open, that we have assurances from her that we are the priority to stay open versus, you know, whatever other places might be. And a lot of that has to do with, I think, us being not only one of the larger employers in the district, but if we close, what's happening with everybody else who's, you know, working for mayor or wherever else they might be working? So I do appreciate the goal, the measure, I would just maybe modify that a little bit. And I think in terms of goal one and two, one thing that I would just make a change for is the very beginning of each of those goals. So like for goal one, you have lead the development of the Rochester Public Schools Strategic Action Plan. I would just strike it and just say develop, because we know that you're going to be leading the development of because you have a group. And maybe I was just mincing words, but how do we measure whether you let it or not? You either did or you didn't. But the thing we want you to do is to develop it. The thing we want you to do for goal two is to implement the safe and open schools plan. So to me, that's more just of a mechanical or medical need. Everything else I appreciated, and I certainly appreciate goal three.
And Jess, what I'm hearing you say for the second one, it's something like, we'll take all reasonable steps within the district's control to keep schools and programs open. Is it that more along the line, what you're looking for?
Something in that, on that vein, yeah. Because I think that no schools or programs are closed for in-person instruction is important, but also with the like, I don't think anybody ever could have imagined COVID before it happened. So that something about, yeah, we're prioritizing no school closures or that remains our priority. But obviously, in order to measure it, the school either closes or the district closes or it doesn't. So I don't want to say we're building in an excuse. But that's kind of what it feels like to me, is like I want to give you not, I don't want to set you up for failure in that sense of like, if we do have to close it and we have to say, well, you didn't meet goal two. You know, some, something along that line. But yes, I...
Thank you. And Director Workman.
I think on, on goal two, and I share some of the same concerns that have already been expressed, one of the things that Dr. Pecow could control is what is actually happening in the schools? In other words, the mitigation standards or whatever that we're putting forth to the adults who are working there, are those being followed? So if you have a school where everybody's getting sick and half the adults aren't wearing their masks, then that could be an issue, and that's something that he could have control over. So maybe more control over the what rather than the result of the what?
That makes sense.
Thank you. Anything else about any of the three goals? Director Nathan.
I was wondering if we wanted to clarify, I know we're changing the measure on goal two, but to clarify educational programs as opposed to people might think extracurriculars or athletics or things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
The, the measure for goal three could be a similar, similarly applied to goal two in that comprehensive report as to the strategies and what we did and what we implemented and how they went. I mean, I would be more than satisfied with a thorough report on how it went. And hopefully, you know, COVID will be done soon. But if, if we continue dealing with variants until such a time that, you know, globally the variants stop developing, this, this could be, a report could be useful because lessons learned so that we continually improve our game. Hopefully, it won't be another school year, but it sure may. So the lessons learned would be a very valuable outcome from that goal.
Ms. Nathan.
So building on that report concept, one of the things that we've had with past superintendents is instead of waiting to the end of the year, we had a mid-year report or mid-year, we called it various things, reflection or update. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't have that planned so that we receive an update on all three of these goals, maybe in December-ish? So we're not keeping everybody waiting till June.
It's a great idea.
Agreed.
I know, I think, Dr. Pecow certainly will, well, would certainly welcome additional input during this week if you want to send him an email. Anything else right now about this? And then, no? And then how are we feeling about... And then how are we feeling about having a mid-year, like a December update? Consensus? Good. Wow, that was easy.
Or maybe January, December is.
Okay, well, and again, we'll just say mid-year, and then as time goes by, we'll kind of see what that looks like.
Well, we're going to have our very new, bold, exciting board calendar that four of us met on last Friday, and it will map out the whole year so we can house this neatly at an appropriate point. Because that is close to being born.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Moving on then, 8.02 revised process for preparing for school board meetings. You have the draft in front of you of the new and improved method I think we would use for communication prior to board meetings. Dr. Pakel, you want to review this briefly?
Essentially, this would be a process of somewhat expanding the amount of time that we take and that we commit to get you materials in advance of a board meeting. One week before the board meeting, our commitment would be absent some kind of an emergency like COVID that we don't control, we would get you all of the materials. And then the second piece is there's, I think, a somewhat longer and clearer period where board members can ask questions or provide insight on issues you want us to examine. And that would happen on Tuesday and Wednesday of the week. And then I would have, with support from the cabinet and other members of the district, two days, Thursday and Friday, to respond to those questions. A pivot from what we're doing now is that all of that would be visible to all board members and all of the cabinet, and it will be electronic. Michelle tells me we can do it in Board Docs. Another alternative would be a Google Form, but that it would be all there for you. And then the final added piece would be I would reserve an hour on my calendar with nothing else we'll ever infringe on it, from nine to 10, when any of you could email Lori, my executive assistant, and say I'd like 10 minutes on issue X. And I could pull someone from cabinet in if there's that, or I just talk to you. After that meeting, I'll have my meeting with the chair and vice chair, and so if there's other issues, I can take that up with them. Some of you may never take advantage of that Monday morning opportunity. Others of you may really want it, and the purpose would be, I'm still not clear about this, or I still really want this to be addressed in the board presentation to Tuesday night, or I'm really concerned about this. Final point is, we would not implement this until, at least our target date would be the second half of October, because in particular, in the operations and finance areas, getting our bids out, getting our process aligned, and it's not just in those areas, but in particular those areas, this is going to take some backward mapping in order to actually make sure that we can have everything for you on a Tuesday before the board meeting. So that's why there would be a lag in implementing this. Oh, and then one final point would be, I would be with the board packet on those Tuesdays before the board meeting, also sending you a memo from me that is essentially an overview of major issues going on in the district. That would be bi-weekly for me rather than weekly, which I know sometimes happened in the past. That will allow me to make it more of a, sort of, a, a thought piece than a list of sort of things I've done. And so that would be an additional piece that at least I haven't been doing since I've been here. And, you know, I want to thank the cabinet folks contributed a lot to this, and I've shared it with the chair and vice chair in our exec meetings as well. And so really welcome any other thoughts or observations about it.
Ms. Amundson.
I want to, I love the concept. I have just a question about the timing and the delay. The problem with this section that says.
Nine AM on Tuesdays till 5:00 PM on Wednesdays is the time when board members have to raise questions and suggest topics? Is that Tuesdays are often very busy days for us with board meetings? And so if you've got someone who's busy during the day on Tuesday, and then they've got a board meeting Tuesday night, and then they've got something going on the day Wednesday, that's it, there's no time to review. So it, it's a problematic date of the week, you know, the Tuesday. If you, if you have to do your work in an evening, Tuesday evening is it. And then that's, that's hard stop for a lot of people. I'm, I'm wondering if that can't be shifted in some way to at least also involve Wednesday evening? For myself, I'm busy almost every Tuesday and Wednesday evening, so that wouldn't work for, for everybody. It just, it limits. Right now, we have the ability to have all day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and Monday morning for us to review materials and submit questions. And so it, it greatly reduces that, that time span for, and takes out the weekend.
And, and I know you know, the logic of that is to front-load it more so we're not scrambling and we can get you better information, but what if we extended it to Thursday morning at nine? So we would say Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday evening, Thursday at nine. Board members have a chance to ask the questions or make the points, and then we have Thursday and Friday to get back to you. Would that help?
It would help. I, I think the, the reduced timeframe, I mean, even that is, is a day off of what we already, day and a half off of what we already have, even your extended timeframe. So I guess the question would be, is there still the flexibility for board members to come in with their last minute questions if the only time they had was over the weekend? Or would that be unwelcome for us to say, well, I had my time this weekend, and it's Monday morning, and here's my question? Would it, would it be unfriendly?
Wouldn't be, that be what Monday morning's for?
Well, Monday morning would be a conversation as opposed to write another written thing, and that'd be, you know, it's, it's really right before the board meeting. The logic of, I definitely hear what you're saying about reducing board members' time to ask those questions. The intent of moving it up, which requires reducing it somewhat, is to make sure we are able to give you really high-quality answers and that also all board members see all the questions and the answers. So there's a trade-off. You're right. And the trade-off would be, we're not scrambling Sunday or Monday morning to answer the questions, and then it may only be going to one of you, because right now, our current practice is usually one of you emails us if we get back. Instead, in this scenario, it would all be visible to all of you. But you're right, there's a trade-off that's there, and board members have to be comfortable with that. It wouldn't be unwelcome. We're just, we, it's our job to support you in making good decisions, and I want to get you better, more timely, and more transparent information to do that. So that's the core thing we're after.
Okay. Director Workman, and then Director Garcia.
So I have a couple questions. So Tuesday before nine AM.
The board packet is publicly posted on Board Docs. So that means anybody in the community can see it before we have really finalized the agenda and had our questions answered? Or would that be in the draft agenda on Board Docs? Specifically, we have our, it's released what, on Thursday night, Friday morning for the following Tuesday, not a whole week ahead?
It could, what do you think? I mean, it would absolutely, this is a skeleton for you to react to, so.
So our policy says four days minimum, right? One of the things that we are running into, though, is that with the current deadline that we have and the Post Bulletin moving to publications for two, two day, or Tuesdays and Saturdays, we're, we've actually been missing the Saturday publication. So our legal publication, which has to be in the local newspaper, now goes out on Tuesday edition, and some people don't get that if they're getting the, the hard copy until Tuesday.
So does the Post Bulletin only put Tuesday and Saturday online as well? They don't have stuff in between? Because I recall seeing things that may be online that aren't printed.
Um, the laws governing that haven't quite kept up with the ways that we actually do that. So we're meeting the criteria because we do the online publication, but, but the Post Bulletin doesn't put the printed version out, which is what the law is talking about in the publication.
So does the law specifically say printed? That could be something for the legislative committee to work on. Like, why aren't we up to date with the law on how we actually function?
In the, in the local newspaper, and so we can certainly check on that. But I, the only reason I brought that up is by bringing forward the timeline, it would be better for the community, at least those members that don't have access to the digital versions, that they would, if they could get it on Saturday, all I have to do is get it in by nine AM on Thursdays rather than Thursday evening, so.
So is, is Board Docs, is the agenda and everything else printed in the Post Bulletin? Are you just talking about a notice for having a meeting?
The public notice is, it has to be published in the Post Bulletin as well as the agenda, the draft agenda of the meeting must also be provided to the newspaper.
Okay. I don't know if I've ever seen that before. And I know the other thing was that, and this may be something for the calendar committee to discuss, is a list of dates of all the meetings for the whole year are given ahead of time to the Post Bulletin or to the public or whatever? You know, obviously, if we have a change or an addition, we put that in. But I think that would satisfy at least the announcement of the meeting. And if you had something in there that said, check Board Docs with a link for the agenda, then that might be a way to fulfill the obligation of the law. I'm not an attorney, Karen's not here, so to ask about that.
Director Garcia.
Yeah, so I really appreciate the attempts to, you know, revise this meeting process, because it does feel a little bit chaotic, especially when things are getting updated, like, right before the meeting. So I just have, I think, a question about the transparency section that I think will inform, I guess, my support for Director Amundson's comments about the timing. So for transparency's sake, for the second one, it says to ensure that all board members are included on questions and responses from staff. My question is about the public, and maybe this is tagging on what Director Workman is saying. So we get a lot of people who are sending us emails, like, at three o'clock on Tuesday to say, you're about to go into a board meeting about blah, 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 this is the issue I want to discuss with you. So now effectively, we need to communicate to the public that they need to be ready to send us things almost a week ahead of time if they're wanting to consult with us rather than just send an email. So they, they do need to be aware of what's coming up so that they can communicate with us the entire week before rather than, like, the few hours before. Because I get the majority of emails sent to me right after Board Docs, the agenda's uploaded. So that, and my other question is, because we're supposed to come to the conclusion of whatever vote we're going to offer in the board meeting, sometimes I have, I have concern about sending things ahead of time to ask questions, because I'm supposed to be asking those questions and allowing the community to hear my thought process and develop, like, getting to that decision. So are our questions also going to be available for them to see? Or should we then just be, as you separated them out, ask questions versus flag issues? Because I feel like, I can certainly ask logistical questions, you know, but in terms of the flag issues, like, I want to make sure that the public knows that when they're saying, Dr. Garcia, will you make sure you ask law or be concerned about this, that they know that that is being brought by someone from, at the table. So there's that. The second part, also to kind of follow up on what Director Amundson was suggesting, is if you can give us as much time as possible to get you these questions or these flag issues would be helpful, because, like, for example, if last week was a study session, today is a board meeting, we would be doing two meetings at, like, I'm prepping for one meeting while I'm also on the clock to get you information. Karen and I both work full-time, so we would basically have from, if our meeting ends tonight at seven, to get you what you need by basically 7:00 AM for me on Wednesday morning. So we would have, not counting the fact that we need to sleep, less than basically 12 hours to do prep that we would have done for over three days potentially. So those are my two, thank you for this, and those are the two things that I need to clarify for myself.
Ms. Nathan, and then Mr. Barlow.
So to build on what Director Garcia said, you know, most weeks when we have board meetings, except for when we have study sessions, that Tuesday that the board agenda would come out, we don't have a board meeting.
Correct. So it would really be uncomfortable, just like, either last week or today. Yeah.
Right, right. And I also think the issue of having the board packet available to the public, I think it's a good idea to have the board packet available to the public. And I think what I read is that no agenda items will be added after this date, and no additional supporting materials will be sent unless, you know, it's necessary. Because I think that's also been one of the issues, is we, it's an agenda item, but we don't necessarily have all the materials that we need until later in the process. So if that's something that the superintendent and the cabinet is willing to commit to, then the public will have everything that we have at the same time that we have it on that Tuesday. So I, I don't have a problem with it going public at that point, because it's, it does give everybody the most, the most information.
Director Barlow.
So first of all, I agree there was slash is a need to revise our current meeting preparation process. Could you, Dr. Pakel, speak to, in the short period of time you've been here and/or cabinet members, what is driving this need, if you will? Why you believe that this will better position superintendent, cabinet, and broad category efficiencies for all of us? Can you perhaps speak to that briefly, please?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Two things. One, for reasons that I think board members have understandably articulated, we have gotten very, very thoughtful and very, very detailed questions from board members on Sundays and Mondays. And that is very little time for us, running a $350 million organization, to do thoughtful responses for you. So part of the logic was to get your questions earlier so we can give you better responses, and we have to push ourselves to get you the materials earlier so you can do that. The second piece is just to be, to be really transparent, I was surprised and, and am concerned that we currently provide individual responses to individual board members that the rest of you don't see. And that's just a process I encountered, and I think, I don't think there has been a problem with that to date, but you have big decisions ahead of you and different issues, and I think you all should get all of the information, and you all should know what each other are asking. So if Julie sends a question about issue X, you all would see what Julie's questions are, and you all would see our responses, such that the full board has that level of transparency. And we have somewhat more time to respond to your questions than, than we do when it comes in, like, over the weekend on Monday. One other final point that I think is really important, we're really here only talking about the, the process of trying to get you good information before the board meeting. In the meeting itself, you can still raise any of those issues. And I always appreciate, since I've been here, the heads-up that, that you all try and give us. But, you know, it's my job, it's our job, to answer any question that you want to ask during the meeting if you didn't have time to ask it in advance. So you could still ask those community questions that you get at 3:00 PM, and it's been very helpful to try and have a heads-up about that. But if, if you get the question at 3:00 PM and we haven't had a chance to get an email from it or respond, you can ask it at the meeting, and if we don't know the answer, we can commit to get you the answer following the meeting. So this really is only trying to front-load a bit and make more transparent what happens before the meeting. Once we're in that meeting, you all can raise any of those issues that are on your minds or that constituents are asking you about.
Ms. Workman, go ahead.
Just, just hope that we need to appreciate what's before us. This draft then has been created as a tool to primarily help us, well, the collective us, the board, and cabinet, and superintendent. And this is something that you previously had shared with the executive committee, board chair, vice chair, and cabinet as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Director Workman.
Yeah, I think, I think the practice has been generally that if a school board member asks a question, that the response does go to the entire board, simply because if you have three or four board members who are asking the same question, that's not very efficient.
efficient as well.
I think we've, I'm glad to hear that. I think we've, at least in the brief time I've been here, we haven't adhered to that. And so that does, that is part of the concern I have in.
I mean, I mean, and if there's, I mean, and a board member would want to remain anonymous, you can simply say, "Here's a question that was asked by a board member. Here's the response," and then send it to everybody so that we all have the benefit of that, of that information. I mean, there, there have been questions that have been asked, you know, previous to your being here, questions that I hadn't even considered, which really helped me in my preparation for the board meeting, like, oh, here's another angle, rather than the board member getting, sending in the question, getting the answer, and then I come to the table and I ask the same thing, which might be informative to the public but isn't particularly a good use of the, the board time.
Thank you, Director Garcia.
Yeah, I just want to say, I do appreciate this, I'm into it. Because it does help me also, Karen and I have talked often about this, I realize that she's not here, but for us, it's very difficult to have no process when we work full-time and both of our schedules can be very hectic. And so anticipating that there may be other future board members who also have part-time or full-time jobs, this will help us also be able to be more transparent with them about what the work is going to entail and how they should schedule themselves. The transparency piece for me about, you know, are, like if you're going to send us a response to the questions, I think my ask would be, you know, send it in like an Excel spreadsheet or whatever. I don't need to be identified as the person asking the question. I just want to make sure that if it's not going to be talked about in the meeting because you've answered my question this way, that it is available also with board docs, if that makes sense. So like I just want other people to know that those questions were asked and they were answered and they're somewhere that they can find them even if we don't talk about them in the meeting. Because if we are able to do, flag this for discussion more often, our board meetings will probably be even shorter than they are, which would be nice. And again, I will just say, if you could give us just a little bit more flexibility or as much as you can stretch out for the prep time, that will help. Because sometimes we also want to consult with other people. And so if I only have, you know, an evening or whatever, a day and a half to do that, they might not be available for me that quick, for that quick of a turnaround.
I may, my cabinet colleagues may scream, but could we, and you can just think about this, could we commit to send the board packet out on Monday rather than Tuesday? So it's one further day back, so it's giving one, it's moving it one day in the other direction. So we're sending it a week and a day in advance. Gives you a little bit more time to do it. We're going to have to reinvent our processes anyway. But do you have an immediate reaction to that?
Yeah.
Still, we have occasional consent agenda items to have because.
Yeah. I think so.
The key thing there is that those are few and far between because we're really getting our work aligned to get the board everything we can. And yes, when there's a bid, when there's a change, when there's a contractor that comes in, then we'll have to. But we're really minimizing those so that they have it as firm as we can get it earlier. So Monday doesn't strike terror into your heart immediately?
I saw Scott just clutching his heart there.
I'm not looking at Scott for a reason.
I'm the board doc guru, so I need to process that. I mean, everything, this isn't just me, it's all the other parts of this that involve, you know, the RFPs, the scheduling of the RFPs, the best value interviews, the writing of the board docs afterwards. I mean, I'm sure it could be done. I imagine it will take some weekends potentially, but it could be done, I suppose.
You know, it seems to me, Scott, too, that if it says events outside the control of the district and in building, if things come up during that week that you can't control, seem, from my perspective, that would be appropriate then to add those to the agenda. And if it's a building thing and they need the answer, something's happened and there's got to be a change order, something has to happen right now, I think that, my way of thinking, that's reasonable. But typically, it wouldn't be something about policy or student evaluation or curriculum or one of those kinds of things. So Kathy, then Melissa.
So can I ask my fellow board members who are looking at the time constraints, is there something that all day Monday doesn't give you but end of day Monday gives you so that you have Monday evening and that at least gives cabinet Monday during the day? But if it's done by the end of the business day on Monday, then that gives us Monday evening and Tuesday and Wednesday. So it gives us two evenings to work on it.
Yeah, I will be working during the day Monday, so getting it to me during the day is not going to be useful to me. So anything after whatever your regular workday would be just fine.
Wow, with a thumbs up?
I think that's a good middle ground. When I looked through this, I kind of went through and blocked every 11th day preceding and 8th day preceding because I need like four hours prior to each board meeting to write items due. So, and I thought that would be a good rhythm, so I do like that end of day Monday published better.
Ms. Severson.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to offer a few thoughts on that. I think that this board is exceptional because you have many members that have been part of this district or, or board members that have studied the district. But when I came onto the board, much like Dr. Garcia, the community doesn't understand the inner workings of the district. So they depend on you to be their voice and to make that reason. I will say that one of the best things that ever happened to me was I was forced to do policy work. And once you are forced to do policy work, it helps you understand a greater 30,000-foot view. And I think, I got to tell you, I'm really excited to be in the position right now, having been a board member, to work with cabinet, to help them pull this together, because I get it, right? Board members need the answers and they need some timeframe to do it. But, but you've also been charged to do the work within a policy, right? So there, there are some great things coming down the pike. There's, there's this annual calendar that we're going to talk about things more, more regularly. Board, new board members and existing board members are going to be able to know when the appropriate time to talk about those things are every year. There's a lot of organization in this district that has been missing for a long time. And it has caused some, some conflict, I think, between cabinet and the board members. And I, and I think everybody's trying to do the same thing, but this board agenda process is a way that we communicate it with the community. So I feel very confident that they've done some great policy work on this board and that in the next year, you're going to see some of the rewards from that. But in the interim, they're going to need some longer time. Plus, we have an interim superintendent who's trying to juggle 1,000 balls at 1,000 times and trying to get to know all the personalities. So I will be happy to work with each one of the cabinet members individually to, to do what we have to do. I'm going to contact each one of you and schedule some time to, to have that one-on-one meeting about how we work together to just make this process work until, until we get comfortable in this new dance. So I just wanted to offer that this is an old problem and just new players in the dance.
Ms. Amundsen.
So I like the idea of Monday, that gives an additional evening. I think the key, though, is flexibility. I mean, you've heard from board members who say, "I can't always do this by this time and my constraints are this." And we've heard from cabinet members who say, "It's, you know, going to be tough to make that deadline. There's going to be some things that won't." So if this is a, if this is an aspirational goal, if this is a, this is how we'd like it to work, but we know that not everything's going to fit in this box, then I'm good with it. If it's going to be real strict and, you know, like, like Dr. Garcia mentioned, we hear from people in the community right up until the last minute. I mean, literally the last minute, like I get emails at 5:25 and I'm like, "You think I'm reading my emails five minutes before the board meeting?" But, but the, the point being that as long as we all allow each other the flexibility and the understanding that everybody's busy, everybody's got a lot going on, and we'll do the best we can, then I'm good. If it's going to be a, you know, a shut door, you didn't get your questions in by this time, it's, you know, too late, then that's not going to work. And same, same thing the other direction. If we get things uploaded to board docs at 5:20, we understand that that's what happens sometimes. And we're all going to do the best we can with everybody.
I, I hear what you're, you're saying, Melissa, I understand that. But one of the things we were attempting to do here is to arrive at a consensus that we would adhere to the guidelines. So if, if there are guidelines here that aren't going to work, I mean, every once in a while, there's going to be an emergency, of course. But if, for the most part, these aren't going to work, then I think we need to rethink this because, you know, otherwise, we're going back to the way we used to do things. So, and we may not be able to do this at this meeting, but I, I really think we need to come to an understanding about how we will all work together in a way that can be consistent for every single board member. So that's one thing. Second thing, and Director Garcia, you were mentioning this, if our agreement is that every question we send to the superintendent and/or the cabinet will be sent to, all board members will see the questions, and then all the community, this will be on board docs, so the entire community will see the questions and the answers, which is fine. And, you know, anything sent, as you know, on school district email ultimately could be in the public venue. But we may have to rethink a little bit the kind of questions, the wording of questions that we send. You know, if it's something that a particular person wants to know about a particular kid or whatever, is that something we want the entire community to see? So are we going to agree that everything's going to go on board docs or Google or whatever it is? Or that we'll send the questions and the answers will come just to board members but will not be part of board docs? And I'm okay either way, but I think we really have to agree to that. Yes?
I think the differentiation between asking a question, as it shows here, to provide board members clarification on something versus flag issue is important because I think, and obviously, we would de-identify anything, you know, if we're asking about a particular individual. But I, I am of the mind that if we are going to ask it, even if we make it sound more professional, then perhaps it comes across in a direct email, that if there's a format that we use or a template that we use, I think that'll be helpful because not only will it reduce the amount of time that we have to address that in the meeting, it will dispel certain confusion. Because sometimes, and I will speak, I don't want to speak for Director Nathan, but we get added all the time, we're tagged all the time in things, and it would be so helpful for us to be like, hmm, screenshot of this thing, here you go. I just, I think it would be more efficient in a number of ways to be able to have like a physical version of those questions somewhere.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Mr. Barlow.
I know you're, we're probably ready to move on, but so what, we will continue to have the ability, even if, even when we do ask of the superintendent and our cabinet questions in advance and they respond, that does not preclude us from raising those questions or issues during the course of the school board meeting. Okay? I think that's important to be understood. And then secondly, even if we were to receive a question from the community at 5:28, we still have the opportunity to raise that question in the course of the board meeting. And then so, you know, for me, that's all I need to hear and realize to, to, to say, okay, this draft preparation procedure is good. It doesn't take anything away from me as an individual board meeting in terms of my ability to raise questions or to ensure that the constituent concerns that are sent my way are aired publicly, if that is indeed part of the call I feel I have. And that we're still in a good position to know what other board members may be asking in advance of. So if you're looking for consensus tonight or not, I don't know if you were, I'm certainly in favor of the draft as presently presented.
I think I really appreciate that. First, I love the idea, Dr. Garcia, of a template for this that makes it easy both for you and others. I love that. I would shift, I think I've heard what we have here where, where previously it said board packet is posted Tuesday before 9:00, it would be Monday at 5:00. And then on the other end of it, it would stay, instead of Wednesday at 5:00, it would say Thursday at 9:00. You'd have up until that Thursday morning. So we're, we're lengthening it a bit in the front and a bit on the other side. So I would add, I would shift to those, those two. The other thing that I think this conversation really helps me think about clarifying, this is only how we work together in preparation for your board meetings. It's not how you might email me or one of these other folks about an issue in the district that you are interested in dialoguing about. It's just, I, this is on the agenda, I want this information, I want to flag. So it's, I think we, we're still talking outside this process frequently and effectively. It's just the, I want to know this before I take a vote or before we have a meeting for our board meetings. So that we're putting it in writing that the whole board can see it and then, you know, at some point, the community can see. And I think the only point that isn't as clear, and maybe we don't have to resolve it now, but there was an interesting point about when the agenda, or what I'm calling the board packet, first appears, is it public from the beginning? I think I heard Kathy saying she's supportive of that. I think there's, there's some practice of having it be draft and then it goes live Thursday. I could, we could do either. I think actually that's the will of the board that would be important. For us, this is just about getting our ducks in a row earlier so we can get your feedback so then we can do a better job of responding to it in a timely fashion. The question of when it goes public is really a board decision. It could go public at 5:00 p.m. on Monday when we give it to you, or it could go public on Thursday morning at 9:00, after we've gotten your questions and confirmed that both could work.
And in the past, we've had it go public as a draft. So, you know, if we put it up there and something does have to be changed, it can be. Ms. Nathan.
What's the requirement for public notice?
Sorry, say it again.
The requirement for public notice of a meeting is three days before a meeting. So traditionally, right, our public notice of the meeting has corresponded with when we made the, the agenda available to the school board and to the public simultaneously. I think what I'm hearing is an option that on that Monday, the agenda can be available to the board and the cabinet, but the pub, the public notice of the meeting where the agenda goes public could still be in that three, that three-day window that we do now.
Essentially, it could happen at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday when you are, when your, when your hoped-for window also closes for flagging the questions, at 9:00 a.m. it could go public in draft and we could meet the three-day requirement with still a Thursday. But, but in this scenario, we've started our work to support your decision-making several days earlier.
Okay, and to be clear, we don't have to post the agenda. We have to post the notice, but the agenda, that's been our choice to do it. So whether we do it on Monday or Thursday, I mean, I don't, I don't care. But that's just something we've done and it's not required.
And technically, somebody pointed this out to me recently, because I haven't thought about it that much, is our agenda is a draft agenda until we approve the agenda at the meeting.
Exactly.
So regardless of what goes out to the public, I mean, and this is maybe where we have to do some, some training for the public, that this is where it is right now, but the final agenda is approved at the board table on the day of the meeting.
So three things I think we may, maybe need to clarify and come to consensus on. First of all, we agreed that questions sent to the superintendent, the ones, the way they're asked and answered and shared with the community, that that will be public. Any objections to that? Okay, secondly, we've agreed on the time changes in terms of when board packets will be available to board members and when the superintendent will receive questions.
And you will receive responses.
Right, and when we will.
We're committing to get you responses before 5:00 p.m. on Friday. We're committing to get your responses before 5:00 p.m. on Friday, too.
Okay.
You're getting that, that's a really important, you're not just given, you're getting it too. You're going to get earlier responses so that you have more time to look at them, including over the weekend.
And then the third thing that the superintendent said, that this is about school board agenda issues, not about everything else that comes up. So given that he is open to answering questions from board members about concerns people have or, or other things, not on the agenda, are we willing then to adhere to the guidelines that we come to consensus to this evening?
It's worth a try.
Give it a shot? Okay, is that what?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, we'll proceed, this is very, very valuable, and I think like in most things, kind of like what you all said earlier tonight about my goals for the year, let's have an explicit time certain to evaluate how it's going. So we can try it for two months and then we will say we are going to explicitly have a, a discussion at a study session in January or something about, you know, is it working for you? Is it causing Scott, like, to get ulcers or is it actually doable? And so let's, we'll, we'll build that in as kind of a process check.
Now, if our goal is to go ahead with this on October 17th.
I want to reserve, since board members have, I think, enhanced this proposal tonight, but also shifted a little, let me actually reserve the chance to talk to the cabinet folks about exactly when our implementation date would be because this has shifted a little, I think in really good ways, but this has shifted a little. So we'll get back to you on the exact implementation date, but not before then. And not a long time after that either. I mean, I don't want to overthink this, but.
And it may be good to have it, be different for everyone, right? I mean, we're going to have a target date, but some people can get their agenda items in pretty quickly and others have to wait for a lot of other.
This is an area where I'm not so eager to be flexible.
Perfect.
There, there you go. And that's the whole consensus thing, that we're saying, yep, we're going to live with this.
I mean, for us internally and staff, not the board. We need to get this done so the board can get it. And it's not because anybody's not working really hard, it's just a matter of changing our processes. I think the glimpse that John just gave you off the top of his head of how he preps back from board meetings is the same thing Scott's doing, same thing Heather's doing. Everybody's got their processes. And I'm just saying, we collectively need to back map our processes a bit differently to be getting the material there. And I greatly appreciate board members' willingness to also try, understanding there will be exceptions, to get us those questions so we can get back to you in a more timely way. So.
So we will wait to hear from you after you meet with cabinet and think this through a little bit more about when it might be realistic for us to begin with this. We will have a date, we can put it on the year-long calendar, about when we will review this with cabinet and you, and is it working or not? Do we need to modify it in any way? Good. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Those were the three agenda items for this evening. It is 7:25 and we are adjourned.